Okay, bye. Salam aleikum.
Wa aleikum assalamu alaikum.
Shall we start?
Fada.
Can you guys see the... my screen, the one I'm sharing?
Yeah, the screen is visible.
You can see it, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, Alhamdulillah. So, Bismillahir Rahmanir Rahim. Alhamdulillah, Rabbil 'Alamin. Wassalatu wa assalamu ala Ashraf Anbiya wa Musaleen. Sayyidina nabiina Muhammad ibn Abdullah. Wa ala alihi wa shahbihi yaman tabiha hum bi Asanin ilaiumiddin. Wa sallama tasliman kathira. So we are still in our Kitab Matul Ajrumia by Ibn Ajr Rom. And previously, we have discussed about the noun that are in the state of Raf'ah. And today, we'll see the noun that are in the state of An-Nasb. So if you recall, at the beginning, we mentioned that there are four types of Arab, which are Raf and Nasb and Jarra and Jazn. So today, we are going to discuss about An-Nasb and nouns that are in the state of An-Nasb. So Ibn Ajr Rom, he said that Babu Manzubat Il Asmaa, the chapter of the noun that are in the state of An-Nasb. And he said Al-Manzubatu Khamse Ta'ashara. The Manzubat, the noun that are in the state of the Nasb are fifteen. Fifteen, one five. And he listed them first. He said, "Wa hiya al-maf'ul bihi, wa al-masdar, wa zarfu zaman, wa zarfu makan, wa al-hal, wa al-tamiiz, wa al-mustathna, wa asmula, wa al-manada, wa al-maf'ul min ajlhi, wa al-maf'ul ma'ahu, wa xabar kan wa akhawatiha, wa asm inna wa akhawatiha." And wa taab'iul il-manzub, wa huwa arba'at a'shi'a, anna'tu wa al-aghfu wa taukidu wa al-badal. So he started first by listing all of those Manzubat. And then he went on to explain each one, one by one. So he started with Babu al-maf'ul bihi. Babu al-maf'uli bihi. The Bab of al-maf'ulu, al-maf'ulu bihi. So, for example, when I say, "Dara ba zaidun amran." Dara ba zaidun amran. Dara ba zaidun amran. So here, we have first the fi'il. The fi'il. And then, we have the fa'al. So the fi'il is this one, the action. Dara ba. In this case, it's to strike. And zaidun is the one who did the striking. Is the one who hit, did the striking. So dara ba zaidun, therefore, zaidun is fa'al. And then you have here, amran. Amran. It is the one upon whom the action was done. The action was done on amran. It is he upon him, the action fall on. So, the one who was beaten here, or the one who was struck here is amr. And this one is the maf'ul bihi, that's why is manzub. It is manzub. And same here also, when I say, This one also is made of three parts. The first one is the fi'il, rakiba. Rakiba. And then you have here, the fa'al, the subject. The one who carries out the action. And then you have the al-farasa, maf'ul bihi. So the one whom the action was done to. The action was done to. So here, you have rakibtu al-farasa. So rakiba is the fi'il. And the ta is the fa'al. And al-faras is maf'ul bihi. Is the object. Is the object. And this one is always manzub. It is always manzub. Rakibtu al-farasa. And here, dara ba zaidun amran. So here is dara ba, is the fi'il maadi mabni al-fatha. Fi'il maadi. It is the verb. And you have zaidun as the fa'al. The fa'al, the subject. And which is marfoug, fa'al marfoug. Fa'al marfoug, bil damma. And you have here, amran. Amran as maf'ul bihi manzub. Dara ba zaidun amran. Said, "Wa huwa..." So al-maf'ul bihi said, "Wa huwa al-ismu manzub." So it is always manzub in the state of Nasb. And we mentioned previously that the standard sign of Nasb is al-fatha. Al-fatha. Rakib al-farasa. So first, ism, it's a noun. The maf'ul bihi is always a noun. And then it's manzub. It's in the state of Nasb. And then, "Alladzi yaq'au bihi fi'il." Alladzi yaq'au bihi fi'il. Which, upon which the action happens. So the actions happens upon the maf'ul bihi. Like when you say, "Dara tu zaidan." Dara tu zaidan. Dara tu zaidan. So dara tu zaidan. Here, zaidan is the maf'ul bihi. First, it's ism. Zaid is a ism. Secondly, it's manzub. Manzub bi al-fatha. So you have the two fathas here. And thirdly, "Alladzi yaq'au bihi fi'il." So here, the beating happens on zaid. So it is the one who was beaten, zaid. So dara tu zaidan. Nahu dara tu zaidan. Wa rakibtu al-farasa. Likewise, here, rakibtu al-farasa. Al-farasa here, first, it is a noun. So how do you know that is a noun? Because it has al. So this one is a sign of a noun, al-farasa. And then, it is manzub also. You have the fatha here, al-farasa. And it is "Alladzi yaq'au bihi fi'il." So the mounting happens on the faras. Rakibtu al-farasa means, "I mounted the horse." Faras means a horse. So, "I mounted on the horse." "I mounted on the horse." So the horse is maf'ul bihi. So is it clear? Do you understand what does maf'ul bihi mean? Is there any question on this? Bye. So, "Wa huwa qismani, zahir wa mudmara." There are two types of maf'ul bihi. The first one is zahir, meaning it's explicit. And the second one is mudmar, meaning implicit. Implicit. So, "Fa al-zahir, ma taqaddama, dikhruh." So the example of al-zahir is what we've just mentioned here. When you say, "Dara tu zaidan." So zaidan is an implicit noun. Likewise, al-faras is an implicit noun. You can see it, it's clear. And then you have al-mudmar, where it is a damir. Where it's hidden, is a damir, is not a noun. Meaning it's implicit. Said, "Wa al-mudmaru qismani, muttafil wa munfafil." The mudmar, or the implicit one also, is of two types. The first one is muttafil. And the second one is munfafil. Muttafil, meaning it is attached to the verb. To the verb. While munfafil, it is detached of the verb. So example of muttafil is when you say, "Dara bani." Dara bani. Dara bani. For example, "Dara bani." Dara bani zaidun. Dara bani zaidun. So here, this one is made of three parts. First, you have the dara ba here, which is the verb. And then, you have the fa'al here. Zaidun, which is the subject, is the one who carried out the action. And then you have here, the ya. This ya, referring to the speaker. Dara bani zaidun. Zaid struck me. Zaid struck me. So here, the maf'ul bihi is not an explicit noun. So rather, it is a pronoun. So it is damir. This pronoun here, the ya, is the maf'ul bihi. Is the maf'ul bihi. So this one is, maf'ul bihi is mudmar. But here, it is connected. It is connected to the verb. Or it is attached to the verb. That's why it's called muttafil. It's called muttafil. But it could be also munfafil. For example, when you say, "Iyyaka na'budhu." "Iyyaka na'budhu." "Iyyaka nastain." So here, na'budh is the fi'il. And the fa'al also is here inside here, damir mustatir. The maf'ul bihi here is this one, iyyaka. Iyyaka, meaning you only, we worship you only. We only worship you, Allah. So here, you have iyyaka as the maf'ul bihi. As maf'ul bihi. But this one is, it's a damir. It's a pronoun, iyyaka. But it's munfafil. It's separated from the verb. It's not attached to the verb. It's detached from the verb. So it's not connected here. So that's why we call it munfafil. Munfafil. So muttafil means attached and munfafil detached. So it said, "Fa al-muttafil i'thna'ashar." The attached one are twelve. I'thna'ashar. Wa hiya dharabani hana wa dharabana. Wa dharabaka wa dharabaki wa dharabakuma wa dharabakum wa dharabakunna. Wa dharabahu wa dharabaha wa dharabahuma wa dharabahum wa dharabahunna. So all of these are connected to the verb. They are attached to the verb. Whereas these ones, well, munfafil, i'thna'ashar. These ones also are twelve. Wa hiya iyyaya wa iyanah wa iyyaka wa iyyaki wa iyyakuma wa iyyakum wa iyyakunna wa iyyahu wa iyyaha wa iyyahum wa iyyahunna. So these ones, they are detached from the verb. They're detached from the verb. Like here, iyyaka na'budhu. You have the verb here and the fa'al. And you have the maf'ul here. So is there any question on this one? Al-maf'ul bihi. So we said that al-maf'ul bihi is the noun or it's the object. It is the object. The noun on which the action happens upon. So the actions falls on the maf'ul bihi. So when I say, "Qaratu al-kitaba." Qaratu al-kitaba. Qaratu al-kitaba. So here, you have qar'a. This the fi'il and you have the fa'al here, this ta. The subject is this ta. I am the one who read the book. Al-kitaba is maf'ul bihi because it is read. So what is read is the book. So that is the maf'ul bihi. The reading occurs on the book. So this is what we call maf'ul bihi. So if this one is clear, now we'll move to the second, the second of the Manzubat. The second.
Afun, Sauda Brhman. I just want to ask something. So the difference between the attached pronoun and the independent pronoun, the iyyaka and the ha that comes after, na'budhu and saying, "Iyyaka na'budhu." So is one of the difference that the iyyaka, it comes in the beginning? I read somewhere, it comes in the beginning always. The attached always comes after the verb. And hal ha'da sahi?
Yeah, but here, the main difference is that in the, if it's attached, it will be in one word. Like here in qaratu. In, where is my, okay? Okay. So here, like qaratu. So, no, where? Let's say, qaratu hu. Qaratu hu. So qaratu hu here, you have the damir. This damir is maf'ul bihi. Qaratu hu. The damir is maf'ul bihi. But it's attached to the verb. It's as if they are one word.
Yeah.
But when you say, "Iyyaka na'budhu." So here, iyyaka is a damir. It's a damir.
Yeah.
But it's not connected. It's not attached to the verb. They are separated, independent of each other.
No.
So that's the difference. If it's, they are attached, they are written like one word.
No. But this iyyaka usually comes before the verb, right? Iyyaka na'budhu. We don't say, "Na'budu iyyaka."
Yeah, it's come before the word, before, yes.
I'm sorry, but when it comes before the verb, it's for taukid. Like this is one of the most strong taukids in Arabic.
Yeah, you feel it taukid wa al-hassr?
Hassr, no. We worship only Allah. Iyyaka na'budhu.
Sorry, salaam alaikum. Is it, that means, is it for emphasis?
Again, could you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, is it, is it for emphasis? I mean, to bringing it forward?
Emphasis. Except for emphasis.
Emphasis, right.
Exactly, that's what we call taukid. Taukid is emphasis. And hassr, hassr is a, I would say not precision, but we just want to say, it's only you.
Exclusivity.
Exclusivity, exactly, exclusivity. And taukid also, emphasis.
So the ayah, "Iyyaka na'budhu." So it has both, yeah, any exclusivity and emphasis. Taukid wa hassr.
There you go. So this one is, expresses absolute tauhid. Meaning we don't worship anything besides you, beside you, Allah.
Salaam alaikum.
Amin wa iyyak. So now, shall we move to the second part? The second type of Manzubat. Said, "Babu al-masdar." Babu al-masdar. Al-masdar is the infinitive. The infinitive. It is the root of the word. For example, when you say, "Jalasa." Yajlisu julusan. Julusan. So julus here is the root, is the masdar. The infinitive, julus. Or qar'a, yaq'au qiraaqan. Dara ba, yadribu, dharban. Dara ba, yadribu, dharban. So here, this dharban is the infinitive. The infinitive. And this one is used in some cases to emphasize, li'taukid. And we call it al-maf'ul al-mutlaq. Al-maf'ul al-mutlaq. So you use the infinitive to emphasize on something. So for example, when you say, "Hafiztu al-darsa." Hafiztu al-darsa, hifzan. Hafiztu al-darsa, hifzan. So, who wants to make Arab of this one? Anyone would like to give it a try? Just this one, hafiztu al-darsa. And you forget about hifzan. Hafiztu al-darsa. Anyone would like to give it a try? Okay, yes, please.
Hafiztu is phel.
Yeah, laiwa.
Madhi, madhi.
Laiwa, laiwa.
And it has inside, inside pronoun called ana, inside pronoun. And al-darsa is maf'ul bihi. Al-darsa is maf'ul bihi. And hibzan, hibzan is maf'ul mutlaq. Coming from the, coming from the same madha of hibza.
Hifz, same.
So this is, this is the, like earlier.
Very good, Ahsan. So here, as he said, hafidah is fi'il maadi. And you have the ta here as the fa'al. This ta is the fa'al, hafiztu. And then you have the al-darsa here as maf'ul bihi. Maf'ul bihi manzub. Bi al-fatha al-zahirah al-a'akhirih. And hifzan now, this one is maf'ul mutlaq. It is a masdar. The masdar, the root of hafidah. Hafidah yahfadu hifzan. It is the infinitive. The infinitive. But here, this one, the, it gives the meaning of emphasis. It emphasized that you memorize the dars very well. It's not like just a half memorization or not it. You memorize it very well. So this is the meaning or this is the purpose of this, who are using this masdar here. In the infinitive, hafiztu al-darsa, hifzan. So said, "Al-masdaru." So the masdar huwa al-ism. So the masdar is always a noun. So the masdar is a noun. So first, al-ism, al-manzub. It is manzub. It is manzub. As here, you say, "Hafiztu al-darsa, hifzan." Hif, hifzan. Hafiztu al-darsa, hifzan. Said, "Alladzi yajiiu thalitan." Alladzi, which yajiiu, it comes thalisan. Thalitan, as the third. Fi tafsiri fi al-fi'il. When you are conjugating the verb. So as you can see here, hafiz. Hafiz. So if you're, you say, hafiz. And then, in the maadi, mudariya, is yahfadu. And then you say, hifzan. Hifzan. So this is how you conjugate. First, you bring the maadi and then the mudariya and then the infinitive. The infinitive. If you are trying to find the root of the verb. The root of the verb of the masdar. Said, "Nahu dharaba yadribu dharban." Dara ba yadribu dharban. So dharban is the third here. And it is the masdar. Then he said, "Wa huwa qismani." It's of two types. The first one is lafdi wa magnawi. Lafdi wa magnawi. Lafdi wa magnawi. Lafdi wa magnawi. So the lafdi, fa in wa faqal, lafduhu, lafda fi'ilhi, fa huwa lafdi. Fa huwa lafdi. So if the masdar and the fi'il, the masdar meaning the infinitive and the fi'il meaning the verb, if they are of the same derivation, of the same root, the same derivation, then we call it lafdi. We call it masdar, lafdi. Like when you say, "Qataltu hu, qatlan." Qataltu hu. Qatlan, qataltu hu, qatlan. So now, you can see that qatal, this one is, this, the qatal to the verb here is from the same derivation as qatlan. It's all made of these three, three letters. Al-qaf, wa ta, wa alam. From the same derivation, the qaf and the ta and the lam. Qataltu hu, qatla. Qatala mean to kill. I killed him. I killed him. So qatlan here means, meaning he's dead, yeah, completely dead. There's no doubt that he's dead. Said, "Wa in wa faqal magna fi'ilhi, dona lafdihi, fa huwa magnawi." He said, if the meaning of the verb and the infinitive, meaning the masdar, if they have the same meaning, dona lafdihi, while the lafduh, meaning the root or the derivation are not the same, then we call it magnawi. Magna, wi, magnawi. Like when you say, "Jalastu u'dan." Jalastu u'dan. Jalastu u'dan. Jalastu u'dan. So jalasa means sit, to sit. Likewise, qadah means also to sit down. So they have the same meaning. But their derivation are not the same. This one is, the, one is made of jim and lam and sin. While the other is made of qaf and ayn and dal. Qaf and ayn and dal. Qaf and ayn and dal. But they have the same meaning. That's why they're called magnawi. Magna means meaning. Magna, meaning. Laf means word. So lafdi, it's the same word. While the magnawi is the same meaning, but different word. Lafdi, same, same word, same meaning, magnawi. Same meaning, different words. So this is the difference between the lafdi and magnawi. So likewise, when you say, "Qattu u'dan." Sorry, no, qumtu wukufan. Qumtu wukufan. So here, So here oath قامة and وقفى have the same meaning. It means to stand up. But the derivations are different. So one is made of قيام, قامة. قيام. While the other one is وقوف. So it's different, that's why it's معنوي. وما أشبه ذلك and the likes. So this is مصدر, it's مصدر. So here قمت وقوفا. If you're doing Irab of it, you say قمت is فعل and فاعل. And وقوفا is مفعول مطلق and is منصوب. منصوب. So this is about the second types of Mansobat Al Asmaa. المصدر or المفعول المطلق, the absolute object. So is there any question regarding this chapter?
Assalamualaikum.
Wa alaikum assalam wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh.
I would be very happy to know what's the reason or what's the implied purpose of مصدر المعنوي compared to مصدر لفظي.
The implied purpose.
Yeah.
The implied purpose of مصدر المعنوي.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe here in the معنوي, you would like just to vary in the words. So instead of repeating the one, one word twice. You just want to vary it, give variety. And bring another word which have the same meaning but with different derivation.
Yeah.
I think that would be one of the purposes of using the مصدر معنوي instead of مصدر لفظي.
Zazakallah شيخ.
Amin wa iyyakum. طيب. Any other question? So if not, we will move to the third one, which is ضرف الزمان and ضرف المكان. ضرف الزمان و ضرف المكان. So Now we've discussed about the verb, the subject and the object. And sometimes in the sentence, we'll have more information about the time in which the actions takes place. Or the place in which the actions happens in. So an action can happen in, it happens in, at certain times and in certain places. So now, these ones. They are, they are called the ضرف الزمان. ضرف الزمان is the time in which the actions happens in. And ضرف المكان is the place in which the actions took place in. So this is ضرف الزمان and ضرف المكان. So for example, when you say صمت يوم الخميس. صمت يوم الخميس. صمت يوم الخميس. So here, صمت, you have the فعل here and you have the تا here as the فاعل. And this يوم الخميس is ضرف الزمان. It is the time in which this, this song or this fasting happens. So this is what we call ضرف الزمان. ضرف الزمان. You can say وقفت وقفت أمام المسجد. I stood up in front of the mosque, in front of the mosque. So here, أمام. So here you have the فعل وقفى and you have the فاعل, the تا here. And أمام, in front of the mosque. So this one is a place, so it's the place where you stood up. So that one, this one is called ضرف المكان. It is always also منصوب. أمام, you say وقفت أمام المسجد. صمت يوم الخميس. صمت يوم الخميس. صمت يوم الخميس. So this one is always منصوب. منصوب. ضرف الزمان. ضرف الزمان. The زمان in which the actions took place. And ضرف المكان, the place in which the actions took place. So both of them are Mansobat. Say بابو ضرف المكان و ضرف المكان. Say ضرف الزمان, the ضرف of time هو اسم الزمان. So it's a اسم, a noun. So as you can see, يوم here is a noun. أمام also is a noun, اسم الزمان. The time, the noun of time. المنصوب, it is always منصوب in the state of نصب. بتقدري في. بتقدري في. So it is suppose or it is assume that there is في here. There is في, it's as if there is a في. There is في وقفت. في. It is as if there is في here. So that's why when you translate it, وقفت أمام المسجد, you say I stood up in front, in front. So it is as if there is في here. في means in. Likewise, here صمت في يوم الخميس. It is as you have في there. So it's assumed there, but it's not mentioned, but we know that it is there. So that's why when you translate, you say وقفت, I stood up in front, in. Or on, in here, I fasted on Wednesday. Okay. And then he said نحن اليوم. اليوم. اليوم أكملت لكم دينكم. Where Allah says اليوم أكملت لكم دينكم. So اليوم here is ضرف الزمان. Today I completed for you your religion. اليوم أكملت لكم دينكم. And likewise, الليلة, meaning night, at night. غدوة is the morning between the فجر and sunrise. So that's what we call غدوة. بكرة, بكرة also is the first half of the day. And سحر is the last part of the night. غدا means tomorrow. عتما means the first third of the night. صباحا means the morning. مساءا means evening or afternoon. آبدا means forever, عمادا, forever also. حينا means for sometimes or for a period of time. وما أشبه ذلك. And anything like these ones are ظروف الزمان.
Afun, Sadab Abdurrahman, there's a question in the chat. Brother says, can you see in the chat? Brother says, why does the حرف جر not make it مجرور?
Yeah, because it is, the حرف جر is removed. But the meaning, we know the meaning is there. So for you to understand, to understand the ضرف. So you, you have to assume, يعني, as if there is في there. So for example, as the example here, وقفت أمام المسجد. وقفت أمام المسجد. So here, it's as if there is في there. Because the meanings give that في, that meaning. I stood up in front of, in front of. So it's as if you have في in there. But since the في is removed, that's why you don't have the, you don't have the جر. Because the حرف جر is removed. But if you say وقفت في أمام المسجد. Then وقفت في المسجد or. If you have the في, then it will be مجرور. But once the في is removed, that will become منصوب. For you. And then with ضرف المكان, the ضرف of place. And who he said هو اسم المكان. It is the name of a place. المنصوب, it is in the state of نصب. بتقدري في. With the supposition of the existence of في. Say نحن أمام, in front, خلف, behind. قدام means also in front. ورا means behind. فوق, on or above. تحت means under. عند, at. ومع and with. وإزاء means besides. هذى also besides. تلقاء in front. وثم, there. وهنا, here. وما أشبه ذلك. And the likes. So ضرف الزمان is the time in which the actions takes place in. And ضرف المكان is the place in which the actions takes place in. So this is ضرف الزمان and ضرف المكان. And they are always منصوب. Is there a question? So any of these words, if you have them, like جئت اليوم، صليت الليلة. أو صمت سأصوم غدا. سأصلي صباحا. All these are considered ظروف الزمان. Whereas then these ones, أمام، خلف. وقفت أمام المسجد, I stood in front of the mosque. صليت قدام الكعبة, I prayed in front of the Kaaba. All of these are considered ظروف مكان. ضرف مكان. طيب، فضل, I think there's any question?
Yes, I have a question.
فضل. Please.
Why is, how does the end word become مجرور when you have صمت يوم الخميس? Why does it become في and المسجد?
Very good question, okay. So here. صمت يوم الخميس. So the ضرف here is يوم. But خميس here, this one is مضاف and مضاف إلي. مضاف and مضاف إلي. So خميس here is مضاف إلي. So it is attributed to يوم. So we'll see this one later. We haven't studied مضاف and مضاف إلي, that's why I didn't mention it. But here the ضرف is not خميس here. The ruling of the ضرف, the applies only here, on يوم. Likewise, here, it's on أمام. On أمام, that's where the rule of the ضرف applies. So here, we call it مضاف and مضاف إلي, we'll see it later. It is when a noun is attributed to another noun, like the day of خميس. In front of the mosque. So these ones are مضاف and مضاف إلي. So the last one, the مضاف إلي is always مجرور. We haven't studied this one yet. But here, what we are concerned here is this يوم and this أمام. So these one are the ضرف, this one is ضرف الزمان and this one is ضرف المكان. ضرف المكان. Does this answer your question?
Yes, zazakallah.
طيب, another question. فضل brother Ahmed Kabeer, Anwar Kabeer.
Yes. Assalamualaikum. Just to, just to clarify myself. When I am finishing a sentence, then although it's a مضاف إلي. I should I use, should I use سكون? Like يوم الخميس is grammatically correct, because it's a مضاف and مضاف إلي. But when I ends the sentence, when I end the sentence, then I should use يوم الخميس. That is سكون on سين.
Yeah, very good. You can use the سكون here, because it's the safest thing. You say صمت يوم الخميس, sorry, صمت يوم الخميس. And or يوم الاثنين, yeah, you can stop with the سكون. Should stop in fact with the سكون. If you are stopping.
Zazakallah.
Amin wa iyyakum.
Thank you.
Allah wa barakatuh. Any other question?
Sadab Abdurrahman.
Nam.
So in the Quran, so usually in the ayat about جنة, about جنة. It says تجري من تحتها الأنهار. Right? تجري من تحتها الأنهار. But I think in one place, it is تجري تحتها الأنهار. So when it is منصوب, it is ضرف, right? When you say تجري تحتها الأنهار, it is ضرف.
Yes, exactly.
من تحتها الأنهار, it is.
جار مجرور. Yes, exactly. Exactly. So like here, I think in سورة التوبة is وعد لهم جنة. وسادكم أول من المهالجين والأنصى واللي يتبعون بإحسان رضي الله عنه ورضه عن. وعد لهم جنات تجري تحتها الأنهار. خالدين فيها. تحتها الأنهار. So here, so these rivers, they are following, they are flowing. And they are flowing under these gardens. So here, they are following under these gardens. So this one here, تحت, is a place, that's where they are following, flowing the rivers. They are flowing under the gardens. So تحت here is a place that where these one are flowing. So it's, that's why it's منصوب, because it's ضرف مكان. تجري تحتها الأنهار. But once the min is, once you bring in the min. In تحتها الأنهار, then it's become جار and مجرور. Because min is حرف جر. Min is حرف جر. من تحتها. من تحتها الأنهار. But here, it has the same meaning. Because here also, we know, we assume that there is min here. من تحتها. But since the min is not there, now it will become ضرف مكان and it will become منصوب. Nam. Any other question?
I think the same thing will be implemented on, for example, اعلموا أن الله يحيي الأرض بعد موتها. And so it's here ضرف الزمان. ضرف الزمان. Right?
اعلموا أن الله يحيي الأرض بعد موتها. Yes, this one ضرف زمان, بعد موتها. After. It's a death, يعني. This one also is ضرف مكان, sorry, ضرف زمان, the timing. Yes, very good. That's true. So I think now I'll just give the floor to Sister Ustada Doha. So she will continue with the next chapter, Insha Allah. And thank you so much for your attention.
Zazakallah خير, Ustad Abdurrahman.
Amin wa iyyakum.
Yes, Assalamualaikum brothers and sisters. You can hear me, right?
Yes, sister. Wa alaikum.
So I have a comment on the last question, like صمت يوم الخميس and then stop on خميس. العرب دائما لا تبدأ إلا بمتحرك ولا تقف إلا على ساكن. So whether you are reading Quran or even like the قراءة العادية. الحركات هي للاستمرار. like, and qira'a al adiya, fa alharkaatiyah l'istimrar. Yani, namma naqif, naqif ala saqin, wa lamma naba, naba bimta'hrak.
Sadaqallah. Sadaqallah khair.
Can you see my screen, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you please mute your, yes, okay, thank you so much. So the next topic from Al Asmaa al Mansoba is going to be al hal. So al hal, al hal huwa ism mansob daaiman. Huwa ism mansob daaiman. The translation of the word hal is the circumstantial qualifier. Al hal huwa ism mansob mufasr liman bahma min al haiat. That means huwa ism, it explains and clarify any uncertain situation in the sentence. You have to put in your mind like some points to understand hal and to implement it always. Always to know the Iraab of hal. So the first thing is huwa ism mansob daaiman. Al hal huwa ism nekira daaiman. Al hal almufrad huwa ism nekira daaiman. You know that we have nekira and ma'rifa, we've been through this. So al hal is always nekira. The other thing is al hal yati daaiman ba'da tamam al kalam. Al hal yati ba'da tamam al kalam. That means that the hal is there and comes at the end of the sentence after a complete sentence. Yani, al jumla qabli al hal hiya jumla mufhuma kamla. You will understand these points when we go through the sentences, Insha'allah. The other thing that you should know, that sahib al hal, sahib al hal daaiman yekun ma'rifa. Sahib al hal yekun ma'rifa, la yati sahib al hal nekira abadan. Tiyib. To understand this, let's take a sentence, for example, jaa zaidun. Jaa zaidun raqiban. So the translation of this sentence is, as zaid came riding, okay. So the first thing is raqiban is ism mansob. Ism nekira, okay, mansob, here is tanwin fathah, nekira is raqiban, not al raqibu. And yati ba'da tamam al kalam. You can see that if we said only jaa zaidun, then that will, that's meaning, the meaning of this is zaid came. So it's like a full sentence, jumla kamla. But we say raqiban to give more details and clarify the situation of zaid. Sahib al hal yekun ma'rifa, sahib al hal huwa ism aldi yitkalam ganhu al hal. So sahib al hal, the condition that this describe is always indefinite situation. So zaid or zaidun is ma'rifa. It will never be nekira. So sahib al hal daaiman ism ma'rifa. So jaa zaidun raqiban. The thing about hal is it always answer the question, kaifa. Yani, if I say, kaifa jaa zaidun, the answer will be jaa zaidun raqiban, okay? So how did zaid come? Zaid came riding. So those things that you should put on mind to understand the hal. The Iraab of this jumla is jaa, falg, right? Zaidun, falg marfooh ala matrfa'ihi dhamma. And raqiban is going to be hal mansob, wa alamat nasbih, al fatha thahre ala akhrihi. Al fatha thahre. This type of hal is hal almufrad, it should always be nekira and it should always be maftoh. Okay. You remember, maybe some of you attended the last webinar, we explained the sifa, an na'at. So sometimes it's like a little bit confusing to distinguish between al sifa and al hal. So we will just look to those two sentences. Jaa zaidun raqiban and jaa zaidun al raqibu.
Afan sister, can you please increase the phone size?
Yes, I'll zoom in, that's better. Yeah? You can hear me, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's better.
Either way, Insha'allah, now it's a bit too small. I think some people are looking, watching on mobile.
Okay.
Tiyib.
Bye. Okay. Jaa zaidun raqiban wa jaa zaidun al raqibu, okay? Sorry, jaa zaidun. Raqiban, yes. So hal is always nekira, raqiban. Al sifa or an na'at daaiman tataba al mousoof fi l'iraab, yani fi alharkaat, fi alharkaat l'iraab, wa fi palaat al tagrif wa tankir, okay? So first, al sifa, tataba al mousoof fi laish, fi palaat, fi alamat l'iraab, fi palaat l'iraab, fi alamat l'iraab. Wakalika tankir wa tagrif. Wakalika tankir wa tagrif. So, jaa zaidun al raqibu. Zaidun is ma'rifa, al raqibu is ma'rifa. Zaidun is muzmuma, rafa, al raqibu is muzmuma, rafa. Al raqibu is ma'rifa, of course, then al raqibu is sifa. That's clear. While here, jaa zaidun raqiban, raqiban ism mansob, nekira. Answer the question, how? Kaifa jaa zaidun? Jaa zaidun raqiban, then raqiban here is hal. So here, raqiban hal mansob, wa alamat nasbih al fatha. While here, al raqibu is going to be sifa, marfoohah or na'at, we say sifa or na'at. Sifa marfoohah wa alamat rafa'iha, alzamta thahre ala akhriha. Alzamta thahre. So this is to distinguish between hal and sifa because sometimes it's confusing. Let's take another example. Let's say, sharibtu al labana sahinan, sorry. Or baritan. Okay. So sharibtu labana sahinan, the translation of this, I drunk the milk or the yogurt, hot. So laban, it's, it's the milk and sometimes it's the yogurt. It's like, it's different from Arab countries. So sharibtu labana sahinan. Sharibtu, let's take the Iraab of this sentence. Sharibtu, it's going to be falg and falg. Sharibtu, shariba, falg ma'adin, mabni ala al fatha. Wa ta'q, tumir musta'il, mabni fi mahal rafa, falg. So just for the time, sharibtu is falg wa falg. Al labana, it's going to be maf'oul bihi mansob wa alamat nasbih, al fatha thahre ala akhrihi. Okay? Okay. Sahinan, since like, I'm saying, kaifa sharibtu, sharibtu laban, sharibtu hu sahinan. Okay, so it's like answering the question of how. So sahinan and it's nekira and it's mansob. So sahinan is going to be hal mansob wa alamat nasbih, al fatha thahre ala akhrihi, watanwin al fatha. Al fatha thahre ala akhrihi. It keeps saying, okay, thahre. Okay. If there's any question till here?
Uh, as-salamualaikum. I have a small question, if you allow.
Yes, of course.
Uh, so far as I have understood, as regards sifa and mousoof and sifa, three or four cast characteristics should be similar between mousoof and sifa. One is the definiteness, the other is genes, the third one is adad or number. Maybe there is another characteristics which should be similar, I don't know. And as regards hal, these three or four similarities are not required. Am I correct in my understanding?
I, I really didn't get to your question.
Oh, I'm, I, I would like to clarify myself. The differences between sifa and hal. So as regards mousoof and sifa, I, I think three, three characteristics should be similar between mousoof and sifa. Like the definiteness, the genes, the adad or the number, and I don't know the fourth one.
Okay. Al sifa tataba al mousoof fi alharkaat l'iraab, wa fi al tagrif wa tankir. Fi yati tataba maqabla fi kul sheh, wal genes a'izan, nam, yani, idza kan muannat, fa akid muannat, idza kan muzhkar, akid muzhkar, okay?
Yeah.
Ba, ba'sal hal, al hal daaiman mansob wa daaiman nekira. Huwa, and it answer the question of how. Like for example, jaa zaidun raqiban, so how did zaid come? Zaid came riding. Okay, maybe he's riding a car or a camel, so riding, okay? So it's answering the question how. Plus, it's always mansoba. Like for example, here, jaa zaidun raqiban. It's not raqibun, it's raqiban. So this is the main difference between sifa and hal, okay?
Okay. Jazakallah.
Yes, for example, stay with me here, sharibtu labana sahinan. Okay, make this sahinan as na'at or sifa, make it now. Yes?
Uh, where is the example, on the top? Sharibtu.
Sharibtu labana sahinan. That means I drunk the milk hot, okay? While it was hot, okay? So make this sahinan, make it na'at.
Okay, okay, sharibtu, sharibtu al labana, labana, labana al sahinan, al sahinan.
Excellent, very good. So it will be sharibtu al labana al sahinan. Okay, so now this is sifa or na'at to al labana. While this one is hal, okay? Understanding hal is like a matter of understanding the sentences. Yani, fahm ma'na al jumla. It will be really easy to distinguish between sifa or hal, okay? So this is, yes, hal. Of course, I just want to mention here that al hal that I was explaining is al hal almufrad. But hal can come in the form of sentences, jumla. So for example, let's take this, just to be clear. Jaa zaidun. Yes, jaa zaidun. Yadhaqo. Yadhaqo, okay? So jaa zaidun yadhaqo. Jaa is going to be falg ma'adin, mabni ala al fatha. Zaidun, falg marfoohah wa alamat rafa'ihi dhamma thahre ala akhrihi. Yadhaqo, falg muzhara, marfoohah wa alamat rafa'ihi dhamma wa al falg, tumir musta'ir, takdiru huwa, okay? So jaa zaidun yadhaqo, there is no hal here. There is no hal almufrad thahre. But if you see that, if you understand the meaning of the sentence, it say, zaid came laughing. So here, yadhaqo, inside it, there is the meaning of hal. So after making the Iraab of the jumla as I said, then at the end we say, yadhaqo, jumla falgliya, okay, right? Yadhaqo is jumla falgliya, yani falg wa falg. The falg is musta'ir, but still it's jumla falgliya. So jumla falgliya, fi mahal, what? Nasb or rafa or jar, fi mahal nasb, of course, because we said hal is always mansob. So jumla falgliya fi mahal nasb, hal. So hal comes almufrad, like thahre, wa'zah, or it comes in the shape of a sentence, whether it's jumla ismiya or falgliya or jar majrur. I mentioned that because in Quran, there are so many ayat with this meaning. For example, wajaa u abahum gishaa an yabkun, okay? Wajaa u abahum gishaa an yabkun. So this is like aya, but I'm sorry because it's not with the shkil. So wajaa u abahum gishaa an. How did they come? Kaifa jaa u abahum yabkun, okay? So it answer the question of kaifa, kaifa jaa u abahum, jaa u yabkun. So here also, jumla falgliya, there is the meaning of hal inside this jumla. And it so on, it's like so many times mentioned in Quran Karim. For hal also, the hal almufrad that we mentioned, hal aldi yekun mansob wa nekira, wa yati fi nihaat al kalam. For example, fakhrajah, fakhrajah minha xaaifan, fakhrajah minha xaaifan yatarqab, xaaifan, okay, right? So here also, it's hal. So when you start to understand the hal, it will be easy. Kaifa xrajah minha, how did he came out from there, xaaifan, okay? Fa fi palaat al khawf. So xaaifan here is again, hal mansob wa alamat nasbih, al fatha thahre ala akhrihi. And when we say mansob, Asmaa mansoba, the hal is one of the Asmaa mansoba, then alamat l'iraab l'nasb, taba kama hiya, as we explained, like alamat, alamat l'iraab. So for example, wa la ta'athu al ardi mufsidin. Again, this is an aya, wa la ta'athu fi al ardi mufsidin. Fi al ardi mufsidin. So again here, mufsidin, la ta'athu fi al ardi, kaifa ta'athu fi al ardi, ta'athu mufsidin. So here hal, again, can anyone make Iraab for this? Mufsidin? Yes, try.
Uh, as-salamualaikum. Can I, can I do the Iraab? Can I try?
Yes, of course.
Okay, thank you. Wa is harfe atuf. La is the harfe of negation. Ta'asau is phel, phel muzareh. And it has you, inside you. And it has you inside you Antum and في is حرف جر الارض is مزروع so في بالارض together is called متعلق بالفعل تعثى
جر مزروع
جر مزروع المتعلق with تعثى I mean with the verb And مفسد is حال
Okay, I want the اعراب for حال like the full اعراب of حال Okay حال حال what?
I am not fully aware of the اعراب of this حال word
Okay مفسدين is جمع مذكر سالم right? Right? So جمع المذكر السالم ما هي علامة نصبه علامة نصب جمع المذكر سالم هي اللياء right? So علامة رفعه هي الواء مفسدون علامة نصبه هي اللياء مفسدين So here حال منصوب وعلامة نصبه اللياء لأنه جمع مذكر سالم okay?
Thank you سلام الله خيره
Yes, welcome Let's go back Yeah, so that was حال I don't know Brother Abdalim should I continue with the ميس or like this is the time we have?
Yeah, I think the time is almost up So Insha Allah I will continue in the next session
Okay, do you have any question? Anyone have any question?
So you know if you want to ask questions in the chat You need to sign up for the team's account So I posted a link in the email and also on the Facebook page So you can just sign up to that link So once you sign up Insha Allah you can access the chat and The other features you can get in all the information from inside the portal So it will be much easier to access the classes and get all the information If you just access the class as a guest you will not be able to send the chat messages Now
Okay I just want to tell you that we in Fluent Arabic we have one-on-one session online We offer so many different classes for Arabic Arabic for beginners intermediate advanced تجweed and الفيأ يعني more than a topic So if you are interested go ahead and please keep in touch with us Thank you so much if you have something to add Brothers Abdalim and Abdjaman
Tayib if anyone has any questions please ask now Insha Allah we have few minutes left Then we'll wrap up the session
سلام عليكم
سلام ورحمة الله نعم
Brother what would be the contact number if I like to know in detail the courses that you offer?
Yeah, so you can just visit the website and then you can get in touch through the email or through WhatsApp So if you just go to fluentarabic.net I'm adding it in the chat as well
Okay Thank you very much
This www fluentarabic.net So you can go there and then you can get the contact information there Or you can just send me an email at abdalalim@fluentarabic.net
Okay
So if you want one-on-one classes for you know one of the متوون like the اجر مية Or قطر الندا or the الفيأ We offer all those classes Insha Allah And also we have a program for those who want to learn Arabic Like these classes are for more towards grammar and the Arab So if you want to acquire the language you know we have something that is based on immersion So what we do is we have some classes for just grammar And the other sessions are just practice So we have sessions where you just practice with a native speaker So that is another unique package we offer So Insha Allah just send me an email and I'll send you all the information regarding the packages Insha Allah
Insha Allah, thank you very much indeed
سلام الله خيرا Any other questions? Tayib Insha Allah so we will see you for the next session Which will most probably be on the next Sunday Just wait for the announcement بسم الله I'll send you an email سلام الله خيرا, thank you so much for joining ورحمة الله فيكم ولقاول هذا سفر الله لي ولكم آخر الدعوانا الحمد لله رب العالمين بسم الله بحمدك شان لا اله الا الله سفر وتوبي اليه